Mr. Duddy, you're up.
300th Street was put on the buildings having building hearing as some motion uncertain. I wouldn't have been a candidate even though it's probably not habitable right now. The owner is working on it, just fixing the front porch. I think this was more of a civil matter as a result of the excavation that's in the senior citizen center and the damage of the town's fence and the trees that were on our property. Essentially, Mr. Alagar undertook an endeavor to remove trees, damaged fence, excavated the area, took out the concrete slabs and things of bad nature. But I think it's more of a civil matter affecting the town's property than senior citizen center.
When was the front damage?
I think it was about two years ago.
Has it been repaired?
Not entirely, no.
Kevin, has the property owner brought any permits for the renovation of the property?
Yes, the property owner took out permits to reconstruct the front porch or re-support it.
And when was that?
I did not bring the permits with me, I guess after the notices and the violations that were sent to the property owner in years, not only to Mr. Alagar but also to the previous owner, Mr. Sappis.
Okay, but it's your understanding that permits happened or at least a permit has been pulled to reconstruct the front porch?
Yeah, the electricity was turned on back onto the building after having been off for a long time and I believe this permit for the reconstruction was a gurgle in between the two colleagues that had to replace.
Does anybody from the panel have questions? Tom, you're the one who's here, Councilman.
I do. Mr. Duddy, you stated no action's been taken, but you don't think it probably is habitable?
Perhaps somebody can, but I'd love to see where the utilities are at this point. Well, no, the steps have been removed. It wouldn't be up to our habitability standards.
Okay, so it's not habitable?
Yeah, right.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilwoman. Councilman Lutz, do you have anything?
I didn't hear Mr. Duddy or all the permits heard. Do you have tools?
Yes.
They were. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council Vice President. The date or the year of the work that this started at this property?
I believe it was last year with Mr. Alagar. Is that shared property? About a year and a half ago, something like that.
Are you instructing him not to answer?
Yes. I'm instructing Mr. Duddy not to answer. I'm instructing my client not to answer.
That's what I was asking.
He says the part, okay?
Yes, sir. No, yes, sir. My question was to him.
I understand.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And please forgive me, we were discussing earlier. Are there any active permits for things moving forward?
There is a permit for the porch roof, a 200 amp service and also 100 amp service, I presume goes down to the garage. That is still open. The re-energizing of the existing service that was performed back in, that permit was in 2018 permit and that's been closed out effective February of 2018. With the one for the repair of the front porch roof and I suppose a new 200 amp service to go on the house and maybe something for the garage, that's not closed out yet.
This is all residential, this isn't nothing? I know that garage is set back farther. Is that, that's not commercial at all, this is all residential?
All residential.
Nothing commercial?
Nothing commercial.
No further questions, sir.
Kevin, is one of the issue of whether a structure is habitable, whether the house itself is energized, do you look to that as one of your check marks? In other words, if a house is not energized, would that weigh in favor of it being uninhabitable or abandoned versus whether the house is energized?
If you did not have utilities, it would weigh into the category of not being inhabitable. And presumably you need electricity and water and sewage and gas, rail electric. Some people live without electricity in town.
And this house previously, I believe, was de-energized?
It was vacant for a good number of years and deteriorating. And so after Mr. Alagar took possession of it, he took out a permit to get the service inspected and re-energized. It's what Jersey Central Power Life requires when there's a service that's been deactivated for maybe perhaps years over there.
Okay, and when that set of circumstances occurs, what if anything does that lead you to believe about the future of that structure?
Depending upon who the players are, the people buying the homes, Mr. Alagar had several properties in town and so I believe he's leaning in the direction of fixing it up and not letting it sit there like that. Doesn't feel good to pay taxes and not get income out of it. Thanks.
Mr. Duddy, do you have multiple violation notices that I'm looking at?
These were perhaps to Mr. Alagar and then also to Mr. Sappis. It was Paul Smith handling this in the beginning. We're handling it all the way. So I really have Paul Smith's file here.
Violation is remedied?
It's, he had tall grass and weed, oh, sorry, it's Mr. Sappis.
So I'm looking at violation last five digits, 00131, for chimneys and towers. To be abated by September 22nd, 2018. The inspection date was September 7th, 2018. How's that been abated?
What was it for?
For chimneys and towers.
Chimneys and towers. I'm not familiar with everything that Paul said, so I can't give you an answer on that.
Okay. So I have to save another violation for stairways, decks, porches and balconies. Inspection date the same, 9/7/2018, to be abated by 9/22/2018.
All the steps to the building have been removed each other.
They've been removed.
Except for the rear steps and landing. Side steps are removed, front steps.
Councilman, would you advise? I mean, I'd like to see whether or not the violation's been abated, but I don't think that I could be done this evening.
Right, so I had an opportunity to stipulate counsel for the Alagars and I believe that this property was expeditiously and effectively handled. Between the conversation myself and counsel for the Alagars, I would recommend teaballing or carrying this hearing for a period of 30 days so we can have conversation. Obviously, there was a council meeting opportunity to have testimony, but the issues that are most remade to this hearing really go to the habitability of the structure and whether, in Kevin's opinion, there are habitability concerns that counsel needs to address because the property owner is not a visiting. So that's why I'd like to dial down on Kevin. If there are conditions on the structure which need to be addressed and have not been addressed.
The building appears to be derelict. It's in a state of disrepair right now. How soon he's going to remedy that, I don't know. And I suppose that's why it was brought up to counsel to put on the habitability hearing because it's very unsightly next to the senior citizen center and it was pretty disheveled for a while with concrete chunks, dirt, debris, fence disrepair. But normally if somebody buys a property that's sat vacant for a good number of years, you give them the opportunity to start fixing it. And then he hasn't had it that long, so it's not really on the radar right now.
When was the verdict date? You said not that long, so I'm just trying to...
I suppose it was sometime in 2018, that's when he went to re-energize the service.
Kevin, do you plan to inspect the property within the 30 day timeframe if we carry?
Yeah, Mr. Alagar, let's begin.
Okay. Is that okay with counsel? We've been advised by our counsel to carry it 30 days. I would like to have the opportunity for our inspector to take the opportunity to inspect the property and find out whether or not it's habitable. I'd get a fourth of the order to do that, or we can come back and revisit this in 30 days.
It's agreeable?
Yes. Mr. Schrader, did you want to take the opportunity to speak?
I did. I have, Mr. Duddy, since you testified, I would hand you these. Those are the open permits, is that correct?
Yes.
So he took out permits for electrical and roof and porch and other things? I have a bit of an issue with carrying it for the purpose of the record. The reason is, Mr. Duddy testified this shouldn't really be on the list in the first place. Mr. Alagar is in the process of renovating a property that he bought as an investment property. The towns, whoever initiated this, seem to think that in the middle of this renovation, it should be deemed uninhabitable. But when you do a renovation of a house that's been vacant for however many years, it's going to be uninhabitable for a while. So to carry this seems to be, to me, a violation of the spirit of the statute and a violation of Mr. Alagar's due process of his own, of his property right. He's doing, he's moving forward in doing what the town wants everyone to do, is renovate and derail the property. But now to bring him before the counsel and say you're going to deem it uninhabitable when Mr. Duddy says it shouldn't be on the list. And then you say that Mr. Duddy hasn't even inspected it. So how can he determine whether it's inhabitable or uninhabitable? It doesn't seem fair to my clients to have to come up here to explain the process that they're going through. Now, Mr. Counsel President, Mr. Fulbrook, you mentioned some violations. Part of the problem with those violations is we're not sure where those violations happen because the property line of this property is not straight. It's on an angle. And my client, I would argue, would have what's called an easement by prescription and therefore has the right to cross the property and to maintain the property that is even the township's property or the town's property. In fact, it has a duty to do so. I would argue that my client has a duty to do so. Somebody fined him for not maintaining the trees and the debris on the property, but I'm not exactly sure where that is when it comes to the property law.
Sir, if I may, the specific violations that I brought up, I purposely didn't discuss the high grass in brush. I brought up the stairways, decks, porches and balconies, chimneys and towers.
Okay, so Mr. Duddy has addressed those.
Right, I mean, is it the same argument?
No, it's not the same argument. But I guess my point is, is that you fine him for stuff that's on, we're not sure where these fines are coming from. To use that as a basis to determine that it's uninhabitable or as a reason to say he's not taking care of the property, that doesn't seem fair to him either. So what I'm asking is that I have, I think we can work out these issues what the real issues here are and maybe we can resolve this so Mr. Alagar can put this property back into a condition for him to make income and for property taxes to be paid to the town. So it's not an abandoned piece of property. But to have another hearing in 30 days and to say, hey, listen, we got to come back up here in 30 days and have the same discussion, doesn't seem fair to him. When it may be that there may be work that needs to be done, it's going to take longer than 30 days. Or maybe that he needs to get additional permits that the town won't issue for 30 days. So we can counsel, the township, town council and I can certainly work through a process, but to put a deadline of 30 days or put any deadline on this seems to be unreasonable. And completely unfair.
If I could, Counsel President, just want to rebut one thing Mr. Schrader said about his client being denied the due process. His client is not being denied due process. He is being, or they are being given the opportunity to be heard. And if the matter is to be carried, they would be given that same opportunity 30 days from now, so...
We can have that discussion at some other point. But the point is, is that to carry 30 days for us to come back here to have this conversation again seems to be unfair when the real issue is not whether Mr. Alagar and his wife are rehabbing it, whether it's uninhabitable because no one's been in the property to prove that it's uninhabitable. What the real issue is, do you want to get the property repaired in a way that puts it back into the income stream for the town? When it's rehabilitated and it's an income generating property for the Alagars, it then becomes a more income generating property for the town as property taxes.
And the fence?
What?
And the fence?
Well, the fence can be discussed. The fence has been there. My understanding, the evidence is that the fence has been there for 20 years, for longer.
Well, I know, yes, it has been there, but I don't think it was in this condition.
Well, no, the question is, is, yes, you may be absolutely right. And as part of the process, we can come to some sort of understanding about the fence. But if this is just about the fence, then this is not the right forum. This is not the right forum to be about the fence or about the...
I just had a question.
Okay, but I have to, you know...
Defend my client.
Defend my client and set forth on the record what my client's position is. If it's about the taking down of the trees and cleaning up the debris on what might be township property, town property or the fence, well, that's not an habitability issue of the building. That's something completely different. And that's why I'm saying it shouldn't be, as Mr. Duddy says, your own witness testified, it shouldn't be here. And so I think that counsel and I can work together to address these issues, but I just don't think it's fair to put it on a calendar again for 30 days for us to have to come back here to have this discussion again.
Mr. Duddy, was that your testimony that it should not be on the list?
Well, I didn't know how it was initially not on the list. We have had properties such as this for habitability hearings in the past. So it's not unusual for us to have a homeowner in a property. We use this as a tool to nudge people on and get it picked up maybe a little sooner than they'd like. And to give Mr. Alagar that I can sit on and compare that for three more years, which is unacceptable to the town.
Which are speculating, aren't you, Mr. Duddy?
Speculating, yes, but it's plausible.
If I may. Is it correct that you purchased this property in November 2017?
Who are you asking?
Anybody that wants to answer, because that's what I'm looking at. It says November 2017.
I'm not sure what the hell is relevant.
Well, my point is it's been sitting like that for two years. So what would make me think if I give you 90 days, something more is going to happen with that property?
Well, we come up with, a counsel and I can come up with some sort of agreement that it does.
So I was there in January and I don't think it looks much different. So that's been almost 10 months. How long does it take?
Well, when you have someone that works, has a full-time business, that this is a secondary business and he does it himself on the weekends and at night, I don't think it's unreasonable to say to have him be able to do it.
So we should look at abandoned buildings for six years because something else is a hobby?
No, I'm not saying six years, but you have testimony that there's open permits. There's open permits that he's trying to move forward to finish up the work so he can close those permits.
If I may, there would be more permits probably required.
Of course. I think he'd apply for them as they come, as the work comes along, right? Yeah, so that's not, that's part of the process.
What is your client wish?
Well, the question is, my client reminded me that there was actually a stop work order put on the property. Are you familiar with that, Mr. Duddy?
I think Paul Smith, when he saw the work going on at the property, he felt a purpose. He just picked on the property and said, "Stop work." And then Mr. Alagar corrected and took out the permit for the porch.
No, no, Mr. Alagar, if you want to swear a name...
No, no, not right now. But...
My rule in this scenario here was to, you know, the process, the permit, the fixing, the process, the permit, the new service. All the violations, perhaps we should have Paul Smith give us the best of it. He's been issuing these violations with Mr. Alagar, who I got part of that process. If his fine classer needs, I'll give him one.
Okay, is there anything else that you want to say? Not right at the moment, if there are any questions, I can address. Counsel Vice President. Yeah? Councilman Lutz, Council President has to be in any comment or questions.
Mine for Paul Smith to be abated, mine for being in 30 days. Let Kevin go through the building and go from there.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
My client wishes to make a statement.
Would love to hear what he has to say. He can swear his name.
Mr. Alagar, you want to come up here?
Sure.
I guess they're recorded. Mr. Alagar, you swear to tell the truth, don't you, and thought about the truth, that's all you've got?
Yes, I did.
Okay. You're the owner of the property in 331st Street?
Yes, I am.
And when did you buy the property? Did you recall?
It was probably in November 2017, like she said.
Okay, and what was the purpose of you buying the property?
Investment. I wanted to repair it. I like the garage. I store stuff in there.
Have you done work to the property?
I started to, yes.
Okay, and why did you stop?
Why I stopped? Because it came into a property law dispute with the town and the senior center. And Mr. Smith came because the township engineer told him to come and put a stop work order on my property. So then I called Mr. Duddy and I asked him about that. And he asked me if I was doing any work inside the house at that particular time. And I wasn't. But I did come down to get a porch because I had to fix the porch. You remember the trailer front, correct? You remember what the property looked like before I bought it? So you can't say that I didn't clean up the property at all?
Sir, I'm going to ask you this, your first warning. I'm here, relax.
All right, no, I just, I just saw everybody's face the whole time that they were...
Was anyone disrespected?
I don't know. I was kind of disrespected by counsel personnel just looking at their phone and not paying attention.
With all due respect, sir.
What pictures were you looking at?
Motion to carry for 30 days. I'm not here. So move, roll call.
That's called a warrant pair.
Roll call. Counselor Clark?
You don't let this go, you know you meant to go on there to tell them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You have no say?
Can we remove this gentleman, please? Yes. Yes. 30 days for it, not with any suspension of court. All right, that'll work. Thank you. Okay, I do want to make one change on the agenda. We have some residents from New York City here with us this evening. I would like to, before we do the bills list, I want to push the first reading of the ordinance. A second while I grab it. So we'll do the first, the first readings, ordinance number 2019-26 right now. I'd like to push that to this, so we can get the folks from New York City. Folks, it either made it work, some... The motion is for ordinance number 2019-26, an ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg, currently in one state in New Jersey, a many-decode of the town of Phillipsburg to create a new chapter of 110 entitled Product Labor Agreement. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion? Counselor McClark?
I'm good, thank you.
Counselwoman D. Roll.
I'm good.
Counselman Lutz?
Yes.
Are you, any discussion on the project?
No, I don't. I read it and agreed.
Counsel Vice President.
Only question I have is, is this instead of 5 million?
It is. Is there a basis for that, however?
What is the question?
For counsel, is there a basis?
5 million. Under the statute, it's going to be 5 million dollars.
Yep, to send it out to bid full support in this, thank you, no conflict. No, I'm good. Roll call.
Counselor McClark?
Yes.
Counselwoman D. Roll, huh?
Yes.
Counselman Lutz?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President McFay?
Yes.
Counsel President Fulbrook?
Yes, ordinance 2019-26 has successfully passed its first reading. Gentlemen, thank you for coming out. If you live in New York and you have a far ride, you're more than welcome to pay off. Okay, we'll go back to the bills list. Pick?
I think you're going to lay it to your house.
We're going back to Counselwoman B. Page's house after the meeting.
That's fine.
Far ride.
Yep. Bills list, current fund, $198,458.19. State federal grants, $8,274.66. Capital fund, $14,629.56. Sewer utility fund, $61,792.98. Sewer capital fund, $2,950.50. Planning board trust fund, $940.40. Bridge development, $46,973.10. Section 8, $3,775. General trust fund, $225. Agency fund, $1,129.29. For regular bill list of $339,148.68. No section 8 rent payments. We have one outstanding table bill for $455. The prepaid bill list, the current fund, the state federal grants, $34,836. For grant hole of all funds, $374,439.68.
Is there a motion to approve bills list?
I'll listen.
Councilman Lutz, you willing to second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Clark? Do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman?
I'm fine, thank you.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes, I got a one check number 30106. Rick Thompson, worth $173.74. Pastor A. Mossman, before we announce it, can we please see your bills for that?
Is it...
I believe it's mileage. Right, check number 77189. That's right, yeah, that's the PO number. Councilman gave the PO number, 77189. I earmarked myself. 17374. Reimbursement for mileage.
Are you requesting a table? Councilman?
Councilman, you requesting a table of mileage? Councilman Lutz?
Yes, 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 I am. Now I'd like to have the receipts for that, should there be sheets?
Okay, so... Councilman...
I earmarked the same check number, and I, my question was something, if this was possibly on the list last month as well, I did not bring it up. I see it for a second month, so I just wanted to know if there's a training involved or there's a monthly... So that he's going to, I'm just requiring to, why there's reimbursement, not so much. If counsel has, Vicki, the counsel and the post has a different request. Mine is just for purpose of how, and why it's showing for you.
It'll, it'll stay on the receipt.
Thank you. I'm good, sir.
Okay, the only thing I have to say is, Vicki, I'm gonna be standing for check number 77205 in the amount of $588 made out of Fox Brothers Alarm. Fox Brothers Alarm is a client of mine. I do, I directly benefit from their business, therefore it would be unethical for me to vote on that bill. Motion to improve is amended?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deteron?
Yes.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Council Vice President McFay?
Yes.
Council President Fulmer?
Yes. Okay, the bills list is successfully passed. We will now have public comment on agenda items. This is public comment on agenda items only. So if you have comment, you're more than welcome to come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have a five-minute time limit. At the end of your five minutes, Councilman McVeigh will let you know.
I'm Joe Weiner, I live at 392 South Main Street.